All right, Mayor, we're ready when you are. You can start in three, two, one.
All right, we will call this City Council Special Meeting for our CIP Update Series for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at four P. M. We'll call this to order. Roll call and certification of coral, Madam Secretary, we will certify we do have a coral present as all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Cam Carr. As I understand, Clay did say that he would be absent for the evening.
Correct, sir.
All right, with that, we'll move to citizens' comments. Did we receive any? All right, seeing none, we'll move to New Business Facilities and Parks Update Series. With that, take it away, staff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council, for your extra time tonight. I hope these have been useful. I think from our perspective, they have been helpful for filling in the gap and some background information without the pressure of an immediate decision, but we do like this to lay out some of the upcoming projects and programs. Tonight's topics are facilities and parks, and we're in the second group of these, and I'll turn over to Robert and Trent, and they'll introduce, and we'll go from there.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time today. As Mr. Pearson stated, we'll be talking and reviewing facilities and parks. With that, as we all start all of our CIP updates with you is that we do like to review over our future with a purpose, and then we'll be turning it over and talking with facilities, and then parks, talking about our priorities and project milestones within each of those categories, and then a brief surface water plant update, and then closing with any comments or questions. So with that, as we've talked about, and as for the listening public, is that many things start with our strategic priorities that are set forth by council. These work through our comprehensive plan and then to multiple master plans dealing with water, wastewater, facilities, multimodal trails, parks master plan. All those are encompassed in taking a look at it to develop our capital improvement plan, and that's what's rolled up here so that you can see that they are stacked and are able to, all these items are used together. So this is our parks and facilities, as you can tell by our calendar that lays out our activities along the way. We have our October one for today, and then our future one coming up underwater and wastewater later in December. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Jack Enoch. Jack is our facilities manager, and he'll talk a little bit about facilities. With that, Jack.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Facility Service Divisions and Operations. The Facilities Division has a small crew of nine full-time employees, myself, a maintenance supervisor, four building maintenance technicians, which is inclusive of a crew leader, and three custodians, totaling over ninety-five years of combined maintenance and repair experience. The building technician provides numerous services from hanging pictures to addressing plumbing leaks to HVAC repairs and everything in between, and the custodial team maintains the cleanliness of the public safety building due to the high-security nature of that building as the rest of the facilities are cleaned contractually. Illustrated here is a quick overview of several but not all-inclusive list of assets and severals and services that fall within Facility Services responsibilities. With forty-one buildings, forty-eight generators, and twenty-three O and M contracts, the list is long and extensive of services and responsibilities. As you can see, they fall within two distinct areas of Facility Services. There is the management of assets and management of operations. Maintaining building operations is vital to the life of the assets, while preventative maintenance is also key to a proactive approach of reducing repair costs. We also depend on contractual support to strengthen our efforts and properly protect the city's investments. One unique operation Facility manages is the HVAC Building Automation System, or BAS. BAS allows us to control and change space temperatures. It allows us to monitor the performance of the building HVAC equipment, and it alerts us when there is trouble with any system so that we can respond quickly to any issues that may arise. For Facilities to efficiently maintain such a vast array of assets and operations, the city was split into three. Variety of facilities such as fire stations, municipal buildings, libraries, community centers, and administration buildings, to name a few within its borders. The building technician is assigned to a zone and is responsible for the maintenance and the operations of the facilities in that zone, with the support of a fourth technician to cover areas during times of vacations and sickness. By doing these own maintenance areas, the response times, equipment downtimes, customer service, and communication to stakeholders have all improved year over year. As the city facilities continue to grow, we will be evaluating the need for a fourth zone to be added to even more efficiency in the near future. As you can see in this illustration, the facility square footage has nearly doubled compared to that in twenty fifteen, all while the building maintenance technician count has remained flat. This means more buildings, more equipment to maintain, and additional level of service expectations. To help ensure that Facilities is providing a sustainable level of service, maintain our assets through staff and maintenance contracts, we will be conducting a staffing study to understand where current staffing and level of services are in comparison to industry standards. As I just mentioned, due to the huge increase in building square footage and technology changes, a solicitation for a staffing study is underway. The goal for the staffing study is to determine the right type, level, and quality of city services, the correct number of employees, along with contractual support, provide city services at the highest sustainable levels of service. We also feel this study will help shore up the Facilities Condition Assessments one and two that have already been conducted, and to also ensure that each Facility Condition Index score, which is vital, is maintained, and the city gets the most out of the assessments, which we will discuss in a few moments. Recently, PBK Architects assessed nine of the city's older facilities in two phases. Phase one was completed in March twenty twenty-one, and phase two completed in February of twenty twenty-two. The objectives that were achieved during the assessment gave us an accurate account of each facility's conditions, outlined a plan to correct found issues, and it prioritized needed repairs so that CIP projects and City Works Asset Management software can be built out to create a robust lifecycle, replacements, and preventative maintenance schedules. As mentioned, maintaining a Facilities Condition Index Score, or FCI, is vital to the life of each facility, and an FCI score was produced for each facility during the facility assessments. The Facility Condition Index is a standard facility management benchmark that is used to objectively assess the current and projected conditions of a building asset. By definition, the FCI is defined as the ratio of current year required renewal cost to current building replacement value. Building condition is often defined in terms of the FCI as followed in this illustration from excellent to poor. As you can see here, public safety building is very good, is in very good condition, and Melvin Knapp is considered poor. For example, how this works is that if all the priority one and two repair recommendations listed in the assessment from Melvin Knapp Activity Center were to be corrected, the FCI would change from poor to very good. From both assessments came a list of recommendations and priority to address critical repair needs. The list of recommendations are projected out to FY twenty thirty-one and are being programmed in the CIP to be considered. Several of these projects are already in progress, such as a rec center chiller replacement. This chiller replacement alone will bring the FCI in this facility up to the excellent range. These projects currently and future will be integrated into the Internal Service Fund as funds allow. Also, as you can see here in this list, there is an intentional focus on public-facing facilities to ensure the citizens that share these facilities can enjoy them for years to come. Since we're on the topic of assessments, as everyone, I'm sure, remembers Winter Storm Yuri and the major challenges that were associated with generator outages and the effects that that had on the city's infrastructure, in the after-action report that followed the storm, several recommendations were outlined. One was to have a comprehensive generator assessment conducted and the addition of a fuel trailer. Both of these items have been completed. The assessment provided to be fruitful in its findings and provided many other recommendations that are now currently being addressed. A few of the other recommendations included a comprehensive list created from the assessment that identified a hundred and sixty needed priority repairs covering thirty-two of the city's generators. This list has already gone through the bidding process, and a recommendation will be presented to you at the next council meeting. Also identified during the assessment is a complete monitoring system of the generators. Monitoring system will work just like the Facilities BAS system that I mentioned earlier. It will allow us to monitor each generator from many different points of interest within the system, and it will also act as an alerting system if a problem or failure was to occur. The monitoring system would be integrated through the Facilities Climatic BAS software as well as SCADA software that is used throughout the city's wastewater and water production sites. Since Winter Storm Yuri, Facilities along with GIS created a generator layer that is updated in real time as to generator status and conditions at each site within the city, and is part of the EOC's war chest during weather events. If a weather event should occur, the Facilities Unit Leader, along with ground support, updates its GIS layer with important generator statuses such as if the generator is actively engaged or on standby, fuel levels, line power statuses, generator outages, and other potential hazards. Other attributes are also listed to give EOC the information needed to prioritize resources on the ground for faster response times, generator fueling coordination, and line power restoration efforts. In closing, with the Facilities Division being integrated into City Works, this will allow for the capitalization of information gathered through service requests and work orders to make data-driven decisions. As Facilities transitions into the Internal Service Fund, we will be able to better identify expenditures per asset to assist with future budget creation. The Facility and Generator Condition Assessments will be tied directly to each asset and stored electronically within our database, streamlining historical records and retention. With that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Upton. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate that. With that, we'll continue our assess, our discussion as we head towards our Facilities Capital Improvement Program overview. We're talking a little bit about that Future Bond Program, our achievements that we've done over the last five years, and then upcoming completions, projected, and projected upcoming milestones. So on our Future Bond Program, three projects that are identified that have been issued a preliminary engineering report or very light to help us develop cost estimates and some investigation is Fire Station Seven, and then our Public Safety Firearms and Firearms Range and Driver Training Track Facility combined. Those are the ones that are slated for consideration in our next bond program. Of course, we have several others that are listed here for potential consideration. Our achievements over the last five years, just to recap for everybody, has been multiple fire stations, our Shadow Creek Library, which is now our West Pearland Library is named, the Tom Reed Library Expansion, several areas where we've expanded our fiber network to include and prepare for SCADA, and also including our traffic control systems, such as traffic signals, the City Hall Annex Roof next door, our fire training burn building, which the fire department is using quite regularly, which is exciting, and then Public Safety Building, and we were able to convert the entire facility onto the existing generator through management of our power and knowing what we were producing and needing, and then being able to utilize that same generator for the entire facility in terms of storm and storm event. With that, looking over the facilities over the next several years, including the projections for future bond programs, is netted at about a hundred and eight million dollars. With that, those items are projected out in the future years. A couple of the items are still pending under current construction. One of the items that we're bringing forward now is taking a look at what the O and M impacts are for those projects so that are included in future years. So with that, on the facility side, as our facilities come online, those electrical costs, insurance costs, projected in fire stations, for example, will be personnel cost as well, projected on the twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe for future fire station number seven. Our upcoming completions, as we're headed towards, is completions of repairs at Fire Station Two, then also our Fire Station Two and Three associated work with the air conditioning systems, public safety building renovations, and the Public Safety Training and Education Building will be underway. Construction contracts continue in terms of fiber backbones, and then looking forward to moving forward with a construction recommendation for our air handling facility at the Nautorium. Design contracts coming forth in the coming months will be our Orange Street and Hill House Phase Two expansion, and then Knapp Activity Outdoor Expansion that's through a grant program. Finally, with that, Mr. Pearson, I'd like to return it back to you for any questions or comments from council.
Back to you, Mayor and Council.
All right, sounds good. Good report. Thank you for the presentation. Open it up to council for questions, comments, concerns.
I just am curious, why is the Knapp Center, why did it have such a low score?
Are you regard regarding which one, Councilman Kate? Oh, you're talking about the Facility Condition Assessment. That'll be Jack.
Yeah, so a part of that was the original facility, and then there was an expansion that was newer, but the older portion of the facility is still its bare-bones structure from years ago, and a lot of the HVAC equipment is aging, and that played a big factor in that, as well as some of the electronics, the water heating system, and security issues are way outdated.
Well, it's more of an update, bring it updated.
I'm sorry?
So what would be recommended is just to bring it, is just bring it up to date?
Bring it, yeah, new technology, new equipment, all that'll change the FCI score quickly.
Any other questions, comments?
On the generators, I think one, one Monday, there was some, some power issues, and everybody's upset because everything was shutting on and off. Is there any way to, I guess we know a storm's coming, or we're going to have intermittent power with the new SCADA system that you can stay on gen, the gen set for an extended period of time without the automatic transfer kicking in?
Well, I can tell you that the generators are designed to be, not to run as long as you, you know, you might think. They're, they're standby generators for short periods of power loss to prematurely set that off. I mean, we could probably set that up for some of the critical facilities, but I wouldn't recommend it for all of them. It would put some, many hours on the generators and shorten the life.
Yeah, I'm not talking about days. I'm talking about if we have a, a power glitch that starts a generator, you go to generator, and sixty seconds later, the line comes on, and then another two minutes later. I'm talking just a small, but if it's not an issue, that's fine, but.
It, it can be intermittent. We can check with our generator contractor, see if there can be a fail-safe put in that will detect the short burst of electrical disruptions, allow the generator to kick on, and, and see if it will monitor any clean electrical, electricity coming in. If it's dirty, it'll stay on. If it's clean, it'll shut off.
Let me add to that, Councilman Carbone. So for example, that happened during one of the, one of the storm events or back and forth at the Public Safety Building when we were there, and a decision was made to go ahead and just manually force that over and stay on the generator while Center Point was working on that. Sometimes you have to experience that to happen before you go out there and make that decision, because you could have that blip, and then that line power, as Jack was talking about, is will come back on to stay permanently then.
Thank you.
Yeah, along the same lines on the generators, when I had my orientation out at the Public Service Building, I don't remember which one, but one of the generators was diesel. Is that bringing that up to where it's going to be natural gas as well so that we don't have fuel issues in the future?
Well, the Public Safety Building generator is diesel. It's a large diesel, can run several days under full power without refueling. The generator's not that old. It's got a fifty-year shelf life. Unless you guys just want to switch it to natural gas, I don't know why you would right now.
So kind of to expound upon that, our design standard has been, has changed to when there is natural gas available, we will go with the natural gas generator, because we do have a significant inventory of diesel generators that have to be fueled. So new generators, as long as it's feasible, will be natural gas, but for the older ones, one of the things we did, and you saw it in one of the slides there, is we did acquire after, sorry, Winter Storm Yuri, we did acquire a, a much larger fueling, capacity fueling tank that we can use to help refuel those. Previously, we were operating with a very small tank, and this one holds how many gallons?
Thousand gallons.
Okay, so the new one's a thousand. I think we were operating with one that held under, under a hundred. So we're in much better shape with that.
Okay, all right, so we've got the fuel.
And that's really kind of the maximum capacity trailer you can get without having to have special, special licensing and things like that to haul fuel.
Councilman Cozett, they add is that when you start getting on natural gas.
Yeah, could we put the list of quantities back up?
There's a list. There is a, a maximum value you can get on generator that can run on natural gas. So there's a max size, so sometimes that'll dictate having to be on diesel fuel.
Diesel versus natural.
Correct. And so that's where we're taking a look, where we've broken certain generators up into multiple sizes so that we didn't have one, just one large. So about the maximum size, my understanding on running on natural gas is about the size that's out at the rec center right now. That's about as big as it's going to get.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Owens.
Now, I'd like to see the list of facilities back up, up there in CIP, facilities.
Is that the list of future or?
Upcoming ones or the?
Master of the big list. It'd been around the first five slides.
You're looking for the CIP list?
Yeah.
And the future projects or the completed? Here's, so these are the ones that are priority projects for our future bond programs. None of these right now are funded.
On the future bond program, just to update the projects that are these, not to replace any of them or check them to see if they need to be replaced or what have you, the replacement cost is close to whatever it costs to repair them. But, yeah, and so that's a lot of different projects that are on there right now at one time. Do we have, when we put those in, Trent, do we have a, a schedule that we go by? And they're on, you know, we have pretty good information off our facilities now about how long, you know, they will stay in place, the way it is, when we start having to put maintenance together to keep them up, roof replacement.
Sure, so if we, if we go back to the Facilities Assessment information that, that Jack was talking about, we have that for all of our facilities now. So part of that assessed, you know, the, the major building components like your, your roof and envelope, and so for, for newer buildings, of course, those, we don't have to plan for those for twenty-plus years, but, you know, buildings like the Public Safety Building, you know, it said, you, you know, you've probably got another, I'm going to make some numbers up, but another five to seven years on that roof, and you need to be ready to replace it at that point. You know, it, so it's, it's got those kind of replacement schedules built in for your major systems like HVAC, your roof and envelope, and other major building components so that we can start to plan those out, the long range, when we need to build up reserve funds in the Facilities Fund to be prepared to do those.
That's good, because, you know, you run up some tremendous cost on these things as we're going through, so, you know, we need to make sure we stay ahead of the game on this and, and where we're at, so, you know, none of these additional costs creep up on us. We know it's going to happen at some point in time, so to have a good schedule of when the maintenance is in and the actual replacement begins.
Yes, sir. So we've got replacement schedule. We've also got good preventative maintenance schedules to, to do the normal preventative maintenance for all those major systems.
That's good to be able to do that, because we don't want to get in the situation where we start listing the priorities of what projects can be done and what projects can't be done, and causes to, to be able to put, you know, have to put a delay in some of these projects when they're, they're all needed.
Member Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, thanks for the update and everything. Did a great job on this. Real quick question, kind of in line with what Woody was talking about. Didn't we in the recently, recent budget exercise come up with a bucket of, of money for future funding of projects for facilities?
Internal Service Fund, right?
There were three.
With that, with regards to that, Councilman Barry, there is some money that, normal operations that was transferred over. With that, at the end, based on the numbers below, there was only about fifty thousand dollars, if I recall correctly, that was above that or below the line with that that could use for a small project or something to that effect. All the projects that are listed out here are numbers that exceed that amount that would be done, that is usually requested through our Capital Improvement Program and then brought forth on that way. So part of what Mr. Epperson stated, along with Mr. Enoch, about our Facility Condition Assessment, will help us try to fund and plan and start planning for the future, and then as we continue to build and put the Internal Service Fund into action more and more as we continue to grow that, then we can take a look at what those costs would incur over time.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think, you know, fifty thousand is pretty low when it comes to projects of that, of that type, and we could see the, we could see the budget creep associated with these projects. So I think we really need to kind of take a hard and fast look at that. I know there are some members that weren't necessarily fond of those ideas, but I think it's a great idea if we actually put numbers in a way that makes sense for historical dollars spent so that we don't have to burden any kind of future bond programs. So it's a great idea if we can kind of take a look at that in the future, I guess. So wouldn't that be something we could do?
So, yes, so that's actually part of, you know, we established the fund this year, and so as we put the, the full policy and the parameters around that, that will establish moving forward, then the, basically the end users or user departments will have to start building into their buildings, kind of like we do with, with the motor pool, they have the lease fees on the vehicles, we'll have a similar type of lease fee that goes into the Facilities Fund that are in those departmental budgets that then get set aside. So when we, when it's time to replace the roof on City Hall, we've budgeted for that. When it's time to replace the HVAC system, we've, we've budgeted for that. When it's time to repaint, you know, we, we have that Facilities Fund ready to do that.
Yeah, and I, I understand that some of those projects are quite sizable, like roofing structures and things of that sort, but, and may, may actually fit for a, a bond program, but, you know, some of those smaller projects, flooring, painting, sheet rock, so on and so forth, could certainly fit within those parameters. So I'd like to keep a close eye on that, see if we can kind of figure out how to work those in.
If I could, that whole piece that they talked about with the Work Order Management System is going to be, it's a stepping stone towards exactly what you're saying there.
Couple of questions, real quick. Staffing study, what's the cost of that? I don't know that I saw it. It may, it may have been in there.
One of the things that we came forth, we actually brought that forth for council to reject the bids last time, and those count, those costs were between thirty-five thousand and eighty thousand or sixty-some thousand right in there, but because there's irregularities with that bid, then we need to have you, because there were over fifty thousand, to come forth and legal's counsel, counsel to reject, and we'll be, we're out on the street.
We're back out. At the upper end, it sounds like, is it in the eighty range? Okay. Water Ops Building at Alice, what's the, what's the scope, not, not necessarily the need for it, what's, what's the building? for it. What's, what's the building ultimately used for?
So, the Water Ops Building located at the Alice Water Plant will be our housing, our water production personnel that are currently housed at the recycled school trailer that is there that we've had for, I don't know how long.
Removing the trailer and more permanent.
You'll recall, you got a flavor of that firsthand and personal, and that really showed how badly we're treating, taking care of our folks there. So, I'm really looking forward to getting that project.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, just, just, you know, what's the, what's the scope of that?
A little bit of office space, you know, some space for adequate sleepovers if required.
So, we'd have showered locker room. We'd have training in there, so they'd have their, be able, just like all of our conference areas have the ability to conduct training online. Couple of small offices, ability to do some lab work there as well. It's hardened facility so that they can house out of there.
What's the, what is the timing, and I know it's, it's in here, but this is for public use. What is the timing of rec center chiller replacement, and then the nauttorium air handling replacement? What's the timing of that?
I believe right now, the rec center chiller is awaiting delivery, or is it underway, Jack?
I think that that's scheduled for later this fall, and I think that's being coordinated, and Carrie and Jack can confirm, coordinated with our annual.
Later this fall, is it?
Yeah, later this fall, coordinate some of that with our annual shutdown and those sort of things. And then, the, the replacement of their handling unit on the, on the other side, we just started the design work on that, so.
What do we anticipate? Six, eight months?
Oh, eight, eight months easily, because of the configuration, things that we need to go do. December is completion, as Mr. Epperson was saying, for the chiller. But the nauttorium, in terms of the, that work is going to take, take a little longer. Take a look at upcoming.
I knew it was on there. It went, went through, I couldn't remember what slide it was.
Construction.
Nauttorium air handling equipment is third quarter.
So, that's.
To start to go out for bids.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, okay. Oh, calendar year, okay. Got it. So, after the summer, at, end of summer, moving on, okay. So, just talking about the elephant in the room with that. Where are we with respect? I know there's been back and forth emails, whatnot. Where are we with school district on nauttorium related issues?
So, I'll start off and then hand over to Darren, but we have an agreement for a cost share on that. And we've informed the school district of these capital expenses that are coming up, and Darren, take it from there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members, as, I don't want to rehash too much of the history, but I know the council's aware that we have an, in our local agreement with respect to that facility that's been in place since 2007. So, we're 15 years into that. The initial term was, for that agreement is 25 years. So, we have another 10 years left on the initial term. And with, with respect to the expenditures that are required for what we call significance, maintenance, and/or repair, that's actually covered in the agreement. And I actually had a conversation this afternoon with a representative from the district's legal department, visited with her on the issue. And in short, we, right now, we're just at a point where we agree to disagree, to be blunt about that. So, when you look at what the, the contract says, right now, it says that the city is, excuse me, that the city's obviously responsible for operational costs. But then, when it comes to significant repairs or maintenance, then we split those costs. And significant is defined as anything over 15,000. And so, repairs are repairs. I think everybody understands what a repair to something that the facility is. The district's position at this time is simply that the, that capital expenditures cannot be maintenance expenditures, which is, which actually I disagree with. And, and I was explained, it was explained to me that they just didn't think that was what the intent of the agreement was. But, the difference is that when you look at the term maintenance, maintenance of facility includes all sorts of maintenance. It includes operational maintenance. It includes preventative maintenance. It also includes replacement maintenance. Because when you have certain aspects to a building, when you look at the term maintenance and, and look at facility standards, the term maintenance is really what is required to keep the facility operational and functional and safe. And when you look at a HVAC or a replacement roof, or those types of components of that facility, then those do include maintenance. Now, and that can be, as a matter of fact, some agreements, and a lot of contracts will actually define items as maintenance capital expenditures. And maintenance capital expenditures, more often what you'll find is in an agreement, it'll include capital expenditures that are made in connection with the replacement, substitution, restoration, or repair of existing assets in order to maintain the existing operational capacities. However, it typically would not include capital expenditures of, for new assets that seek to expand the operational capacities.
So, if we expanded the nauttorium, that would be different?
Correct. And so, and so, I've, I've explained to the district that, you know, if, if, if it was the intent of the district to limit the term maintenance, which right now is in here as an all-inclusive form of maintenance, it was not limited. That could have been limited and excluded certain forms of maintenance, i.e. capital expenditure items, if, if the district had chosen to do that. But, it's my understanding that was not the intent at the time, because the intent would be that eventually, items are going to come to the end of their useful life. And when it comes to the end of its useful life, it's going to have to be replaced. And when it comes, when it has to be replaced, the idea would be that this is a first 25-year agreement, and then it has the option of the district to extend it for another 15 years, 10 years from now. And so, the idea would be that that extended use of life of the facility, then we would be equally responsible for significant maintenance or repair. And again, the, the city's position being that maintenance is an inclusive term that includes also replacement costs. That, that was the position. At the, you know, we've, we've had conversation, I think it was sort of an agreement to disagree. It was conveyed to me that the district would like to end the agreement, and that they would essentially like to enter into some form of lease that doesn't include those costs, because they felt like it was just too, too costly for them to, to continue to operate under the agreement. And so, that's, that's where we're at on that end.
Any landlord's going to put, you know, even future repairs, it's all going to be part of a rolled-up lease. I mean, if you're going to replace a roof, it's going to be in your overall lease agreement. I mean, for emergency repairs or emergency provisions, I mean, that's a different, that's a different story. But if you're, I mean, a building like that's going to have a roof replacement, it's going to have an AC replacement. Any house you have out there is going to have a roof replacement or a house, or a, or an AC replacement at some point in time. And so, I, I'm just, the reason I'm asking about this is just, how much time are we going to give ourselves to work through this? Is, at, at the end of the day, I, I'm assuming we could continue to repair an HVAC system to a point, but then there's a point where it just financially and operationally just makes zero sense to repair it. And I don't know what that, what is. We may already be there. I'm assuming we're already there. And so, I, I, I mean, that would, that would cost even more money than writing a bullet and, and replacing it. So, how much time are we going to give ourselves to have this discussion?
I think it's an ongoing conversation, but it needs to have a shelf life, right? So, you know, Darren just had this conversation this afternoon. They amplified what they've been saying informally. But, there is no exit from the agreement. It's a long-term agreement. And we're obviously solid from what we see it as. We'll keep talking to them. But, you know, as you said, we've got a little bit of time before this thing comes up. So, it's not like this week, but we need to get this clarified. And, and just for the record, too, we've shared that we would be bonding for that amount. And we've offered to extend terms that would be payments on the same as that, so that, you know, we're not, there's no need to pay us up all front, that, that amount, so it'd be reasonable. You know, if that's 10 or 15 years, what the useful life is, whatever that is.
Yeah, and I mean, that would be, I think that would be a reasonable approach. Mr. Owens and I were both on council when that agreement was, was signed. So, we were there the night we, we approved it. I'm assuming the minutes were reflected, both of us were there. We really didn't miss. And so, I, I know questions were asked in the course of that negotiation of, you know, what if roof is replaced? What if HVAC is replaced? What if, you know, significant replacement or repairs, like a bulkhead or something like that? We might not have called it that. But I know we talked about significant repairs or replacement, like a roof. Because I mean, that's a big building. Overall, it's just a huge building. And you know at some point in time, the HVAC system's going to have to be replaced. We, we talked about those items. I think we actually asked about those items. It'd be interesting to know what minutes, what, I mean, we taped every one of those meetings. We didn't have, we didn't have virtual or everything on camera, but I know we taped every meeting, you know, that we had. And so, it'd be interesting to know how those discussions went, at least on this side, relative to those questions. I know we contemplated it. I know we talked about it. I'm not sure how the $15,000 number itself was targeted as a number. I'm sure it was a negotiation at some point. But, but I know we, I know we had those discussions. I, I understand the school district's side of things. They, there's no one really there and on staff and on the board that, that was a part of that negotiation. So, it's kind of a, an agreement they inherited. And now some of these bills are due, which is unfortunate. Buildings age, it's infrastructure age, and, you know, and it, and it's got to be replaced. And so, I'm just hoping we can, seems to me, Darren, there's a legal definition somewhere out there that is, talks about, I mean, maintenance, and you found it in several contracts, sounds like that there is, you know, maintenance does include replacement.
And the thing is, contracts, you know, can, can include things, or they can exclude things. You can do that built into a contract. And, and I guess my, my, the point I was trying to make is that, yes, the term maintenance is a very broad term, unless you narrow it down and, and back things out of those costs. And in this particular case, I don't believe that was the case. That wasn't done. And so, I think the intent was to, to make that for those significant items, and because of the length of the term, was included to, was meant and intended to include those costs.
So, yeah, I, I wrote a note down as it, as it relates to the facilities Internal Service Fund. I just asked myself a question, just ask it, you know, could we, for example, that part of the Internal Service Fund is setting aside monies today, so significant repairs and those types of things, we'll have money or cash to do that in the, in the, in the future. And if we did contemplate some kind of a lease agreement, you know, can PISD have an agreed-upon amount that would go into an Internal Service Fund for an nauttorium, you know, for future items? In other words, come up with some set amount, and it would be set aside. And I don't know if we, I'm sure we have the, the financial wherewithal and, and, and paperwork trail to say their X dollars a year are held into this account, and we use that. We'll show them how that gets used above 15,000, and then, you know, we, we could have an accounting for that. I, I don't know, maybe that's another way in the future. We've got to get across the hurdle of, of what we're talking about now. But, assuming we get across that hurdle, how do we, how do we do that to the future? So, there is a, you know, some amount that they can budget and, and bank on and, and be good for. I, I think that's, I think that'd be good for their part, it'd be good for us, if there's anything else.
So, and in fact, that was a part of a suggestion that was made. But, bottom line, the city can't be held, we need to be held harmless. You know, we entered into this long-term deal in partnership, and it's been a mutually beneficial, positive deal. But, to try to undo that or redo that at this juncture, just wouldn't be fair.
Yeah, because even, and I get, you know, they say they can't afford it. Well, they can't afford to go build their own either, if they can't afford this, just because, I mean, debt service on a brand new, or I don't even know what one would cost, probably three times the amount of what the nauttorium costs, you know, then. Assuming that, you're probably talking north of 20, 25, or even 30 million dollars to go build one. Debt service on that's certainly going to be up into the millions a year, just a debt service that. So, I, hopefully, we can work through whatever this is. I'm not really interested in just a lease agreement that doesn't pay the freight. I mean, it's got to pay the freight and the use of it. So, anyway, I wanted to put that on the table, having a discussion about it. Hopefully, we can rectify this. At some point, we've got to, we've got to go replace it and move on. You have a question?
You want to talk? Go ahead. This is probably more important, man. I can do it in a minute.
Mr. Hernandez, go ahead.
Oh, wow, thank you. My questions are on the NAP Center. Looked like the, the Condition Index was in that range where it was, I guess, justified to build a new facility. Have we thought about what that would look like? Or is it just making improvements to bring up the score?
Councilman Hernandez, there's a couple of options that are, have been thrown around. One is expanding that facility, or then talk about that with, within internal staff. The other one is, is that we're doing a grant program associated that, right now, through Joel's Group. And then, the items associated in there are talking about, you know, as we talk about your air handlers, your electrical equipment, your buildings, those items that need to be.
Is that why the outdoor expansion mentioned, the social distancing? Are we trying to grab some of those leftover dollars?
Joel's very good.
Okay, he's not here, I see.
So, I can't answer that question. But those items that need to be done on your, on your buildings, you may, your walls may last you 50 years, but you still got to take care of the stuff inside. And that's what these are. And so, then, as a result of replacing those, updating them, and bringing them up to standards as they age, then that facility Condition Index, as Jack had mentioned, those two items, those Priority One, Priority Two items, then would return this facility back to a good, to very good facility.
Got it. On the, I know that they have a, did you have something to add to that? You look anxious.
Yeah, just piggybacking on what you said. It's, it's the lowest score, but the, the improvements look like they're like in 2025 and 2026, they're pushed really far back from what I, what I remember from that slide. So, I.
2023, it looks like, for the outside renovation. But the technology, yeah, is 26.
So, council member, okay, the, based on the assessment, it was determined that that would fall under a Priority Three. You know, it's a few years out. It could be sooner, hoping not, but it could be that five to seven-year stretch that we're looking at. But now's the time to plan for it. And some of these items may be replaced between now and then, as failures occur, if they do, and that'll also change the score as we go along.
Then, on the, I know the NAP Center currently has a kitchen, and this is just an idea, I'm just, it's something we could even do. But, if we are going to make improvements, if it's possible to improve the kitchen for a couple of reasons. One, I know we have actions there, and I think it would be beneficial to them. Two, if we could put some technology in there, where we're doing other technology upgrades for like the HVAC and stuff like that, to allow for cooking demonstrations to be more visible to seniors who may be attending cooking demos. And then, three, if the kitchen were expanded, so that if there were community events and, you know, an association or something wanted to use that commercial kitchen or something to create something for their events, that we could attach a fee schedule to that and maybe generate a little bit of revenue, even for maybe some of the, what is it, cottage law producers, things like that, I think. I don't think there'd be anything in, so we rent our fields and stuff, Darren, anything that would prevent us from doing something like that, to realize a little bit of revenue if we were to expand that?
It would, it would just fall under our facility rentals.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, just, that's just an idea, a thought, to see if that comes up in the future, or there's an opportunity there, maybe to expand upon that for those reasons. That's all I've got, Mayor.
The seniors that get lunch every day, is that cooked there or brought in? Karen, do you know?
It's a combination of both. Some of the meals that we provide through actions, those are technically prepared elsewhere and warmed at the facility. And then, we do a lot of, I'll call them parties, socials, gatherings. And those types of foods are somewhat prepared onsite, and then other organizations bring in catered food.
Cozza? Yeah, Clay or Trent, I don't know where, who would answer this. But, in regards to our facility, our IT, our motor pool fund, I'd ask back during one of the budget workshops as far as a target for each one of these funds, as far as whether it's a percentage. Remember, Carbone went on to say generally acceptable accounting principles as far as that goes. Have we come up with anything for these funds as far as what we're looking at to, you know, hit a goal and, and kind of maintain a?
I can't fly, but we're going to, that's on the docket for 23. We haven't got anything back yet, so.
So, it will be forthcoming?
We all agree, we want that too, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'm like, I'm going to circle back to your comments about the Pearland ISD deal. Um, I was on the back end of that whole deal, uh, when I left the board. Um, and unfortunately the contract is a contract that we live within right now, right? Um, I don't think it was fair when it was written that, uh, a previous board burdened another board 25 years down the road or 15 years down the road. Um, I would certainly never do that. Um, but it happened and, um, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I know all the, all the folks involved, and I'm just guessing, I'm surmising here, that, um, they had no idea what the utilization would be for the school and things of that sort. They're, at that point in time, I could imagine that they were just happy that they had a, a place to go and they didn't have to go to the YMCA and the outdoor pool every day. So, um, I think the offer on the bond, you know, being able to, you know, to amateurize that, that payment over a period of time would help them out significantly. And we remember, you know, that we had a lot of conversation about no new revenue. State forced our school districts to no new revenue. So that's where they are and that's where they're going to stay until legislation occurs. So they're kind of handcuffed on revenues. Now, um, in our future agreements, whatever that may be, um, I like the idea of more of a, um, utilization per large expense type thing. Um, and I think our previous presentation said they use like less than 15% of the actual time for the pool and the operation. So I like that idea. Um, but at the end of the day, they are, they are utilizing the services of the facility. They need to pay for it. I know that they don't want to build one and I don't, I don't think that they can afford to maintain it even if they did build it. So, um, so I think, you know, I think all of those, all those things are, are, uh, steps towards finding a mutually agreed upon, uh, future agreement. Secondly, um, the fiber backbone, um, we have a couple of pretty hefty expenditures associated with that. I would really like to understand what that means.
Councilman Berry, with regards to the fiber backbone, that is a network that we've built around the city and our major corridors to be able to start communicating, providing redundancy and communication between our facilities. Uh, that is the trunk main, and then we're working through expanding that to include and send, uh, fiber out to all of our traffic signals. So then we can connect them all into our, uh, traffic management system. We've been connecting our water plants and our wastewater plants, and we are slowly starting to expand that in the coming years to get out to our lift stations so we can see those remotely via fiber versus on, uh, cell or radio or what's verbatim auto dialers when there's a problem. So we can start seeing what's going on with runtimes, uh, pumps running, et cetera. And so that's, uh, then planning that out and sending that throughout the city, uh, to our infrastructure.
It also includes some, uh, our, the ability for our, uh, public safety folks, our police, uh, as they're around the city, they, they watch guard systems able to jump on the network, uh, bring video in that way as opposed to having to sit in the, the PD's yard and wait for that to occur. So, um, it's used, utilized with that as well. And then, um, the AMI uses, the AMI system ties back to the, the, uh, fiber network as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, wouldn't it-
So it's a multiple communication network for all the things we do.
Water, water plants with or something like that a while back?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Was that more of a SCADA system type thing where we weren't communicating back one of our water plants or something along those lines? So I guess the point is, is I guess you're making is it's updates to better communicate with our, with our remote and with devices out in the field and throughout the city, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And a good chunk of that is being paid, as you heard, the, most of the use cases are from the enterprise fund. So the enterprise fund's paying a big chunk of that.
Questions, comments before we move on to parks? All right.
Well, continuing on Mayor and Council, uh, we will be then discussing about our parks. And with that, I'll turn this over to Carrie Capers, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, thank you all so much for the opportunity to be here and participate in this workshop. I think it's just another, um, sign of all of the great work that we're doing here in Pearland and, and, uh, Mr. Upton, thank you for that introduction. Um, I'm going to share some background information with all of you today about our capital improvement program over the past five years and how that has impacted our community as well as our operations. Um, and then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Upton to provide updates on current projects and upcoming milestones. Um, for some of you, uh, some of this information you may have heard previously, um, but because we have some new council members and because the information is still so relevant to so many of our projects, I wanted to go ahead and include it again. Uh, the Parks and Recreation is the fourth largest department in the city. Uh, we manage 547 acres of parkland, 18 miles of trail, 16 softball and baseball fields, a miracle league field, 11 soccer and multipurpose fields, dog parks, playgrounds, uh, splash pads, indoor, and four indoor recreation facilities, including the recreation center and auditorium. With all of these facilities, we're able to, uh, program thousands of recreational programs, uh, each year, more than 16 community-wide events that attracted nearly a hundred thousand participants last year with the addition of the Festival of Lights. Um, we host almost 20 athletic tournaments each year and attract an average of 18,000 people, um, just to the recreation center and to the NAP Activity Center each year. The Parks Master Plan, uh, the multimodal master plan and the Clear Creek Trail Master Plan were each developed through community and stakeholder feedback, um, and research as well as industry trends. Uh, it is these documents that provide and, uh, provide the strategic framework and the planning for everything that we do, including our capital and, uh, programming planning. In addition to serving as the strategic framework for all that we do, our master plans are requirements for our CAPRA accreditation and for many of the grants, uh, that we receive that help fund some of our park and trail projects. In the last five years, we have invested nearly $40 million in Capitol Park projects. These projects include the eight softball and baseball fields at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch Phase One, uh, two new softball fields at Centennial Park, Independence Park renovations, uh, Phase One renovations, construction of the Dolores Fenwick Nature Center and the Clear Creek Trail segments along Pearland Parkway as well as Shadow Creek Ranch. Some of our newest amenities, uh, that we've added to our park inventory include the multipurpose fields and the miracle league field at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. Phase two construction of the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch has allowed the park to become home to Pearland's first cricket, rugby and miracle league programs. In the last six months of operations, we have achieved 80% facility utilization on the multipurpose fields. Uh, we've hosted two very, very successful miracle league seasons that impacted 163 athletes and 240 volunteers. We've hosted 100 field rentals for cricket and, um, 105 athletes have participated in rugby clinics. So these programs, so the programs and services that we provide, um, at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch fall on a variety of places on our cost recovery model. The miracle league provides tremendous inclusion benefits to our community and therefore it's 100% subsidized. The recreational cricket and rugby leagues and clinics provide, uh, beginner and intermediate skill-based instruction to the community and they teach the fundamentals of the support, of the sport. Um, they also provide and encourage healthier lifestyles for the community. And through participation in these sports, um, learning the hard skills that they need to be able to play the sports, they're developing a lot of the soft skills that they need in life to, that help improve their emotional and, uh, mental wellbeing as well as just become well-rounded members of our community. And so for that reason, many of these recreational-based programs and leagues that we run at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch fall on the 50 to 60% cost recovery on our model. In addition to the leagues and the clinics that we offer, the sports complexes also host to a significant number of rentals for cricket, rugby, soccer, football, as well as really large tournaments. The private instruction that is, uh, that we see with a lot of these rentals, as well as the advanced skill development that happens through some of these programs, um, and as well as the tournaments, um, those average at the 125% cost recovery range. In the upcoming year, oh, go back just one second. Thank you. Um, in the upcoming year, Parks and Recreation is planning, um, an in-depth review of our service delivery as it relates to our cost recovery model. One area of focus is going to be evaluating our current partnership agreements to ensure that they are in line with cost recovery policy and that there's an appropriate and equitable sharing of the revenues between the city and the service providers that enables the city to recover the costs that we incur. Um, we're also going to focus on additional revenue streams through program delivery. So we're going to be looking at, um, all of our rental agreements that we have for our fields at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch, as well as at all of our facilities. And we're going to make sure that those align correctly with our cost recovery model. And then in addition, you know, looking at things that maybe we can do as a city internally to help generate some of those additional dollars. So we have a very healthy span of programs that fall across that cost recovery model with our ultimate goal, having a really strong Parks and Recreation business model that makes us sustainable into the future. One of the ways that, um, one of the ways that we can do that when, when looking at just different opportunities is the four baseball fields at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. Um, next week, I believe we'll be coming to you with a recommendation to award a contract to convert the infield's for these four baseball fields to artificial turf. And what that's going to do for us, um, this was, uh, during phase two construction of the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch, we were approached by several groups. The number of tournaments that we're hosting has increased tremendously. And one organization in particular has had, that has been very successful with us, um, utilizes the four softball fields at this complex as well as the four, uh, six softball fields at Centennial Park. Uh, they are requesting four additional softball fields and they asked us if we would convert our baseball fields to softball and we said no. Uh, we have a lot of local use and these are the only four baseball fields in our inventory and we want to maintain those as baseball fields. Um, but what we agreed to be able to kind of meet in the middle was converting the infield's to turf. And what that allows us to do is to play, we can play softball or baseball, um, on those fields and increase their, um, the size of their tournaments by being able to do that. In addition, we're going to tremendously increase the local play on those fields by reducing the amount of rainouts that we, um, that we typically see on your regular dirt infield's. Uh, the economic impact from the USFA, USFA is the organizer that we have been working with for the last, um, between 2021 and 2022. The tournaments that we've hosted so far with this organization have generated, uh, just over $4.1 million in economic impact for the city. So as we're looking at alternate revenue streams and things that we can bring to our park system to help, uh, in, increase those revenues, this is one of the ways that we can do that. So you hear a lot about Independence Park, uh, Phase One or Shadow Creek Ranch Phase Two and the value and the impact that they have on the community. But what do these projects mean in regards to increased park assets, operations and maintenance? It means 4.1 or 4.9 millions, million miles, yeah. 4.9 million mi, uh, 4.9 miles of additional trail, uh, four new landscape trailheads, 10 additional softball fields, new playgrounds, new shade structures, additional trash cans, new restrooms that have to be maintained. It also means increased management and maintenance of those facilities. The Dolores Fenwick Nature Center isn't just a building, it's an educational destination that offers the best natural resources programming in the Houston area. Independence Park is no longer just rough cut open fields, uh, that people could just come out and play pop-out games of soccer on. Uh, it's a regional event destination that's expected to draw more than 30 large festivals in the upcoming year. Um, with each of these new, these are just some of the amenities that we've added within the last five years. So what does that mean from a maintenance standpoint? It means that we mow, edge and remove debris from 547 acres of parkland one to two times a week. We clean and stock every park restroom every day. We prune flower beds, clean and repair benches, shelters and picnic tables. We repair fence, we pull trash, um, we inspect and repair each one of these playgrounds, bleachers, uh, we repair irrigation. We're continuously repairing water fountains, um, cleaning and repairing shade structures and signage. Um, and then as unfortunate as it is, we're dealing with vandalism. Um, just when we're rocking and rolling and we're right on track, we show up at one of the parks and everything has been spray painted. And so instead of mowing that day, we transition and we start cleaning up the graffiti. From an op, and so that we talk a lot about, you know, the maintenance of our parks, but we have to focus on the operations of our parks as well. Um, in addition to the, the mowing and the, the maintenance, um, it means increased management and programming for each one of our facilities. It means additional facility bookings, scheduling, um, staffing, field rentals, providing facility tours, um, renting pavilions, collecting more payments, more customer phone calls, uh, follow-up calls, coordinating more special event permits, increased volunteer recruiting, increased number of purchase orders, processing more instructor payroll and increases in marketing with each of the new assets that come onboard. We have to share this information and get out in front of the community and all of those ta, all of those things take up, um, a lot of staff time. As the number of assets that we maintain has significantly increased, so is the demand for the supplies and the equipment that we need to properly maintain those items. Um, over the past five years, our operations and maintenance budget has remained relatively flat while we've seen a significant increase in the number of assets that we maintain. In FY '22, you do see us an increase. These are for one-time, non-recurring supplementals. This was for replastering the activity pool at the NAP activity, or at the, uh, auditorium and replacing, uh, a couple of old zero-turn mowers. The FY '23 increases that you see are primarily those IT and fleet transfers out as well as the additional, uh, the addition of the contractual landscaping for some of our neighborhood parks. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. So one of the things that we've done, um, you know, as our park system continues to grow and our O and M budgets are not increasing, um, as our park system is growing and also aging at the same time, there's a huge need for us to stay on top of, uh, replacing our infrastructure. And as a result of those things not aligning, one of the things that we've done to help combat some of that was in 2009, uh, we went to the voters, we placed an item on the bond package for $2.5 million. This would be spread out at $500,000, um, over a period of several years to help us address some of these recapitalization needs. Um, the item in 2019 was approved by 71% of the voters and, uh, allowed us to begin replacing several of the items that were desperately in need of repair. The first thing that we did, um, we took a look at, um, where were our biggest safety issues and what, what were the items that, um, were taking the most amount of staff time, either because we couldn't be out in the field, um, doing our regular maintenance because we were repairing other items, or we were spending our budget dollars to repair those items. And so based off of that level of prioritization, uh, we started, um, in 2019 by upgrading the lighting at Centennial Park as well as some of the older lighting at Independence Park, um, with new, more efficient LED lighting. And then in year two, we looked at, um, some of our DG trails and we put curbs on those to help with the maintenance. It tremendously added, um, a lot of our, or gave us back some of our staff hours by improved, uh, maintenance practices. Year three, um, we looked at our irrigation, um, 14 of our parks, um, we just recently awarded, um, that contract to start diving into repairs for irrigation. Um, at 14 of our parks, our irrigation was not functioning properly or not at all. And in years especially like this one, that was very important. Um, and so we'll be addressing that, uh, in this, in this year and, um, somewhat into the next year. Uh, also, one of the items that you will see, um, at the next, uh, meeting next Monday is a recommendation to award a contract to USA Shade for replacement of, um, 25 shade structures in four different locations. These were all identified in the master plan and we are replacing old, um, worn outdated structures. And then we're adding some shade structures over some of our playgrounds to help increase that life expectancy of those. And then of course, just to help, um, anyone out there using the parks to play more safely. And then year five, we're going to be looking at some ADA sidewalk connections, um, as our park system has grown and looking at some, um, remedial actions that we need to take within the parks, making sure that there is ADA connection throughout our parks. And then looking at our master plan once again, um, in the master plan, there's a facilities conditions assessment. And so we'll be addressing several of the remedial actions, uh, that are recommended in that plan in year five. several of the remedial actions that are recommended in that plan in year five. So, the needs don't stop there. I wish I could say that they did, but as our, as I mentioned earlier, as our park system continues to grow, we are approaching the end of this five-year funding. And so, looking down the road, some of the items that are still at the top of our priority list include significant repairs to the gazebo and the fountain right here next to City Hall, refurbishing the splash pad, and replacement of the playground at South Down Park, replacing the fencing at Centennial Park, and replacing playgrounds at Cypress Village and Pine Hollow. Just some of these projects that we quickly identified, that were identified in our master plan as well. This says approximately $600,000. It is approximately $6 million. I apologize for the typo there. So, you see that the needs continue. One of the things that we are hoping to address is by adding some of these fun, you know, funds into our operations and maintenance budget. If that is not an option, then, you know, we'll continue to request those through bond funding, but these are general repair and maintenance items that have to happen to keep our parks safe and in quality condition. So, in addition to, so, in addition to equipment and supplies, it also takes great people to operate facilities and develop exceptional programs and maintain the additional park assets. We work closely with Engineering and Public Works to determine both staffing and operation and maintenance needs for each one of our capital projects. Over the last five years, we've proposed nine full-time Parks and Recreation positions to support the capital growth. Of the nine positions that we identified, we filled one of them. The other positions we added were for an aquatics tech for the nadatorium, which we reduced some contract labor and brought some of those services in-house, and we're able to do that a little bit more efficiently. And then, we've started working on looking at the contractual maintenance and how can that help support some of the needs that we have. So, just to, when we talk operationally and you look at the staffing time, a couple of interesting facts, or just kind of looking at it by the numbers, our natural resources program has increased by 1,000%. Within athletics and aquatics, the number of programs that we offer has increased by 85%. Our adaptive recreation program offerings have increased by 36%. External athletic tournaments have increased by 800%. And, and we anticipate additional tournaments coming in FY '23. So, tremendous increase off, on the needs for our staff. One of the things that I mentioned previously was the contractual maintenance for some of our neighborhood parks. We recently, in, I believe, August awarded, or amended, one of the landscaping contracts to begin providing those services in the neighborhood parks. That is helping reduce some of the hours based off of what we awarded in that agreement. It reduced our staffing needs by about three and a half people. And so, it's helping to move that needle a little bit, but it definitely doesn't close the gap. While we help, you know, while we provided some, a little bit of relief there, we also opened the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch Phase Two amenities, which have, again, added additional maintenance. And then, with the additional tournaments that are coming in, that just continues to Some of the positions that we have been requesting, I believe, we requested nine positions in this fiscal year '23 budget, and we received .5 positions. We added, we took a part-time senior office assistant, which is a position within Parks and Recreation that works at the Welcome Center, at the Recreation Center and Nadatorium. They answer customer service calls, help register the community for programs. They book rentals at many of our facilities. And we were able to make that a full-time position, which was very much needed and is already, we're already seeing the benefits of that. Some of the additional positions that we need in Parks and Recreation are an administrative assistant. Our department has more than tripled in size in the last 10 years, but we have not added any personnel to our administrative division within Parks and Recreation. And so, we are very limited and do not have a lot of backups in that area. We need a natural resources crew leader, natural resources maintenance worker, still an additional four park maintenance workers, a park manager. As it is right now, our park supervisors and our superintendent spend a large majority of their time at their desks handling administrative functions, and they're not out in the field. They're not able to supervise the crews. And as a result, a lot of the, a lot of the projects or maintenance is very reactive rather than proactive. Our crew leaders do a fantastic job, but we need a park manager to help support the Parks Division administratively, a horticulturist, a Parks Irrigation Technician. We're spending over a half a million dollars to repair old aging irrigation, irrigation that is not operational because we didn't invest in the personnel and the operations and maintenance to maintain it. We don't want to be in that position again in five years. So, we are requesting a Park Irrigation Technician, part-time Senior Program Attendant, and part-time Adaptive Recreation Attendant to help support the new fields at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch, and a part-time Event Attendant to help support the growth that we're seeing with all of our events at Independence Park. The city's parks play a vital role in the social, economic, and physical well-being of our community. The parks provide access to recreational opportunities. They increase property values. They spur local economy. They help prevent crime, and they protect our city from a lot of environmental impacts. Parks are now recognized as powerful tools for communities and for local economies. The quality appearance and the condition of our park system not only contributes to City Council's sustainable infrastructure and welcoming community strategic goals, it contributes to the overall image of the community and the perception of its livability. This is extremely important relative to the perceived and actual quality of the community. In just a minute, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Upton to share more information with all of you about our current CIP priorities and some of our upcoming projects. The need and the value and the impact of each one of these projects is tremendous for the community, and we hope that each of you will continue to support this growth in the Paralympic Park system. However, I strongly encourage you, as you support that growth in our park system, that you, that you really focus on the staffing needs that it takes to maintain those properties and the operation and maintenance needs that will allow us to maintain what we're building at a quality level, not just now, but into the future as well. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Upton.
Thank you, Ms. Capers. Council, in closing and talking about our plan for our capital improvement program is that coming up is looking at about $33 million in our parks. However, that's comprised of several things. You have the parks recapitalization, as Ms. Capers mentioned, from the 2019 bond program. We also have in here is our pro-rata share, or share partnership with Tech Dot, doing the trail along Clear Creek down to University of Houston and Clear Lake, and also the remaining balance of our 2019 bond program associated with the Hickory Slough Sports Complex, where we'll be expanding the, thank you. All right, that was drainage. I was just so excited writing that down because drainage is going to happen. But, dealing with Independence Park, that was the other one that had been brought in from a previous council, talking about Independence Park. Again, looking at our parks facilities, taking a look there, what, as we bring these facilities online, the projected operations and maintenance that is impact, that'll go to the budget as we move forward. And then, as we talk, moving forward, our projects that are heading towards completion, fourth quarter of this year is our driveway from John Lizer to the stage to provide the hardened surface there for those activities. And then, park equipment recapitalization, as was talked about by Ms. Capers on our irrigation Wood Creek Bridge was another one that was funded through the Parks Development Fund and to replace that bridge. And Shadow Creek Trail Phase Two, that's the Clear Creek Relief Channel, to connect to the library to Shadow Creek and also to a previous park, trail project that we did under Tech Dot. This is funded through TURS Number Two. And here is our exhaustive, long list of items that, for priority projects for future bond programs. You'll see that a majority of them, as they're running through, is the Clear Creek Trail segments. This was a study that was done in partnership with PDC Parks and the Engineering and Public Works Department to work together to have a trail system from FM 521 all the way to Dixie Farm along Clear Creek. This is a 21-mile type project. We've had eight miles already completed, others slated with our partnerships with Tech Dot to go along, but this was then planning and working with Flood Control District to be able to put that trail in or have it set aside and located during their Clear Creek project that'll be expanded in the coming future. So, it's already being planned. Environmental study includes in that project, and we have a spot already laid out for it. Again, in closing, is that all of our presentations associated with the CIP workshop that we have here will be posted on our hub, and that if any future would like to take a look at it, you can look at the past meetings. With that, Mr. Pearson, turning it back over to you and Council.
And to you, Mayor and Council.
Any questions or comments from Council?
I have, I have a question about the Independence Park Pavilion resurfacing. Carrie, you've mentioned that. And I, when, when is that going to happen? As a person who uses Independence Park a lot, I, I've noticed that it is, the basketball surface is bubbling up and messed up, and, and water stands on that, on that surface also and, and messes it up. So, I don't know if there's some other surface we could get or...
One of the items that we're looking at doing is changing that out to where it's actually going to be a stained rather than an overlay, like what you see right now. We're going to be addressing some of those in this upcoming fiscal year, but then looking long-term at a full resurface. That's one of the items that we identified is the recapitalization items.
A quick question on that. So, Independence Park Phase Two, what happens to the pavilion in Phase Two?
Depends on the, how the preliminary engineering reports do come out. One of the conversations that we had preliminarily was to give it a facelift, maybe by adding some, you know, stones on the pillars, you know, that type of thing to make it more attractive within the park. But there's not any plans to expand it, or, you know, we would definitely address the surfacing, anything like that at that point.
Since the surfacing question came up, I want to make sure we wouldn't be resurfacing an asset that all of a sudden we're going to completely change out or do something different with, with the Phase Two. So, I wanted to, wanted to ask that question, how it all would dovetail together. All right. With that, questions, comments?
Yes, Robert, on the Hickory Slough Sports Complex, I think there was about a $1 million figure attached to that. I assume that that's reworking the retention pond.
So, with that on the drainage side, Councilman Coza, and I, it's common because we want to do multiple things at the same time, but what's been going forward is that that project is part of the 2019 bond program that will expand the detention, and then that will be a future project for consideration is the actual expansion of the sports complex by having additional fields, lighting, expansion of the concession stand, and a maintenance facility. That's for future consideration, currently unfunded at this time.
Correct. So, that $1 million mostly for the expansion of the retention and then a portion of...
All drainage.
All drainage. Okay. That's what I was...
Okay, that, yeah, that was, yeah. That was my, that was my question. And what's the timing? Because I know that was a 2019. What's the timing of the detention?
Mr. Mayor, that's one of our last items that will be started this year. So, our goal, as we committed back in 2019, is that we would either be five years, be started, complete, or in construction. That, we're going to meet in those goals.
So, so then sometime thereafter, the soccer fields, the lighting, the concession stand parking, that would be in addition to that $11 million?
That would be a separate project in the facility presented to you for approval and how to fund that at a later date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, when the, changing out, swapping out the infield, when is that scheduled to take place?
So, we will be, we will be bringing that to you for, with a recommendation at next, on the 20, October the 24th, at the next council meeting. Once awarded, the construction should start in November and will be finished in March timeframe. So, just in time for us to begin our spring season.
Okay. I, I just had a bunch of conversations about moving towards artificial turf and was talking to individuals with an institute at University of Massachusetts Lowell about some of the things that maybe we haven't considered, so I'd like to maybe talk about that. In addition to also, there's some research that UMass Lowell put out, and other cities have contributed to this research. It showed that if we switch to a natural turf management for all of our parks, other cities have seen a 7% to 25% cost savings in management costs, I guess, for turf management after the second year. So, in the third year, they've seen a reduction of cost. So, I guess after the initial capital expenses to get equipment, switches, things like that. I'd like to maybe take a look at that to kind of see if there's some, some potential cost savings in the future by switching gears a little bit in the parks. But I guess we can maybe do that offline. I just wanted to get that out there because I just kind of very recently was looking into this and had some conversations about it, so.
If we, if you got something like that, we need to look at that quick because we have...
Yes, I will get, I've got, I've got some emails and stuff I can forward and start sending some of the articles and stuff to you right, right away.
I don't know what the apples to apples without seeing that.
So, just to clarify, you're talking about staying with natural turf as opposed to artificial turf?
Correct, but also moving towards natural turf management for the parks as opposed to...
Natural turf.
Yeah, so more of an organics management versus...
So, I'll jump in and let Carrie and expound upon it, but I think one of our biggest challenges here is we have our, our small inventory of fields versus the demand for fields.
Yeah, that, that was...
When we actively manage those, we...
Yeah, they, they've even got studies on athletic university fields and things like that with very high-demand athletic fields. So, at least I think if you were just humor, looking at it, you know...
So, with the, with the infield for a softball field, most of the time, those are fully skinned where there is no grass. And a baseball field has the grass lines in between the, in between all of the bases, and it's just the dirt in between the bases. And so, in order for those fields to be played well with softball and baseball, this is the best alternative that we have to, unless you want the baseball players to play on a softball field. And there's just so many variations in the speed that the ball rolls...
And no one wants that.
And techniques and that type of thing. And so, by, by switching to the artificial turf, it allows the same consistent playing surface on those fields, and so, we can get both softball and baseball use of those. Now, with the other fields, you know, that's definitely something that, you know, can be looked into.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I ask. I'll forward this as soon as I get, you know, as soon as I finish talking, I can start forwarding it. But just wanted to put that out there. And I'm assuming if we move forward with Phase Two, that would include the sidewalk at Independence Park?
Yes, it does include sidewalk connectivity throughout the park. Yes, that will be addressed in Phase Two.
Fantastic. Because that, that's like really, as Laney pointed out, as somebody that goes to the park often, it's just so frustrating to see all those families out there on the road. All right, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one more question. You said, you mentioned trash cans, new trash cans in the park. What, what, is it impossible to have recycle bins in, in the parks?
We do have recycle bins in some of our parks. What we have found is the, most of the recycle bins in the parks end up full of trash. So, unless you have dedicated volunteers or staff personnel to sort those, it sometimes is, it's very difficult to, to keep up with those. So, we have them in some of our strategically in different locations where we've been more successful with those. And then, at our community events, we definitely bring out the trash and the recycle, and we try to assign volunteers to help staff those.
Questions, comments? All right, I had a couple of questions. I notice through this, I get emails periodically. Pickleball, I don't see any increase in pickleball here. Is there a way, what, you have some thoughts on that? I mean, is this just a passing fad, or do we think there's benefit?
I don't think pickleball is a passing fad. I think that it is growing as we speak. One of the things that we're looking at launching this spring is an actual pickleball league, hoping to either, either utilize the, some court space in the evening time, dedicating that for an actual league, or potentially partnering with ISDs to rent gym space to utilize for a program. So, we'll see some indoor growth there. That's one of the challenges with the pickleball market and our, the area in which we live is that there's, you know, it's hot outdoors. And so, what we found is a lot of the players do prefer the indoor play, and so, we're trying to maximize all of our space to, you know, take advantage of what we can do indoors. And then, looking at, you know, possibly Independence Park Phase Two, is there a possibility of adding an additional court? And then, I believe this fiscal... And then I believe this fiscal year, we're going to be restriping two, yeah, two of our courts at Independence to add additional courts there. And right now, we already have one striped at Centennial Park for pickleball.
And then the future park recap, I forgot to write down the page number. We could go back. Page 41 on the slide deck. Nope, y'all, different slide deck than...
The future is the next slide.
Yeah, there you go. So a quick question, obviously how to pay for some of this recapitalization needs. And I was going to throw out to counsel, because I see things on here, replace park signs in all parks, $85,000. Zelensky Park repaint, 120. Lakeside Park, 150. Cypress Village, 150. Hyde Park, 50. But yet we get down to some of the bigger ones. Centennial Park, $1,002,000. Veterans Park, $1,002,000. Another one, you know, $1,005,000. So what I was wondering, what's your strategy? Do you want a bond program, all this? Do we want to put X in the budget and just say, why don't we put X in the budget over X years? And I don't know what X is, but you know, is it 300,000? Is it 400,000? Is it 500,000? We just put in the budget and that takes care of, you know, Hyde Park, Cypress Village, some of these smaller ones in the grand scheme of things. It's big for that park, but it's small in the grand scheme of the budget. What are your thoughts on how we pay for this? Because I'm looking at, why can't we just budget? And I know it'd be a commitment from the council to say, let's do so much a year and that'll go to this recapitalization in your budget. We'll just do it out of the budget over four years, five years, whatever the case is.
So if there's an ability to add those funds into our O and M budget or into a special fund, similar to, you know, the facilities funds that have recently been created, you see some of the, through the recapitalization, the irrigation repairs, those were over the So if there's a way to, you know, implement a $500,000 increase to the operations and maintenance budget each year, you know, then some of that funding could be set aside or rolled over from one year to the next to help with some of those larger ticket items.
I'm just thinking some of those should be budgeted items, and we set a certain amount aside just to do them. I mean, obviously, you've got these small pocket parks that we maintain and that are part of our inventory. That equipment needs to be replaced at some point. Hopefully, we can get them on a position where they're not all having to be replaced at the same time, but over some period of years. Anyway, I'd listen to thoughts on that.
Well, what about, then we just increase some usage fees associated with the last budget? What kind of revenue are we looking at in, you know?
$17 is pretty minimal.
I mean, you had to have figured out, okay, with X amount of dollars of increase, this could increase our budget by X.
So that's really...
I don't know that I ever asked that question, but I was thinking it.
It does, but that's really one of the driving factors in the project that we're going to be launching this year is to take a look at all of the services that we provide and look at, you know, I think it was about 10 to 12 years ago, there was a really big direction, maybe 15 years ago, direction within the parks and recreation industry to partner with other organizations. Let's help partner, let's partner with other organizations in the community to help them provide these services so we can, you know, help support them, let them do it well, and then we can offer more to the community. And what we have seen over time is a lot of these organizations, one of the, if we're in a registered sports association or a facility use agreement, we ask for copies of all of their financial statements. And one of the things that we're seeing is that, yes, while they are nonprofit, their revenues that they're making off of these programs are pretty substantial. And so we're going to be taking a look at all of those agreements to make sure that those agreements still align with our cost recovery model and that we're recovering appropriate cost. And if they're not, then we need to look at revising those agreements or maybe looking at what we do in-house to help offset some of those things. And then also identifying different programs and services that we can provide for the community that fall across that cost recovery model. So we have enough 100-plus cost recovery programs that then helps us offset some of these zero cost recovery things like the park maintenance and different things like that. So as we start as an organization, increasing our overall cost recovery, then that helps us as well to start supporting some of these recapitalization things. But it's a process, and it's going to take, you know, a very, it's going to be a shift in culture and how we've operated and what that direction has been in parks and recreation. And it may take several years to get to that point, but that's ultimately creating that business model while still be able, while still being able to provide those critical community services is the direction that we're looking to uncover a lot of those things.
Yeah, but what about the fees we currently raise? I mean, I know Clay says it's $17, but I mean, I get that, but I'm just curious. I don't recall the number that we raise from usage fees.
It's going to depend on the number of rentals, you know...
I mean, historically, what was last year's number?
What's that?
What was last year's number? I mean...
Or revenue? I don't know off the top of my head. I think we roughly brought in about 1.3 million ballpark. I'd have to take a look at that. With the new increases, you know, as we continue to sell additional rec center memberships, that's going to be one of the largest increases. And then with all of the new field rentals, we'll see some increases, but I don't have a projected dollar amount for you on that at this time.
Some of that just goes, obviously goes back into the, like, staffing and those types of things. My, you know, my point on this is some of these are so small, you're not going to bond $85,000 to replace park signs in all parks.
No.
And so my point is, there's, and then some of these are out years. You've got, you know, South Gate Park, you know, replace the playground in 2028. It's not like we're going to have it next year, but it's going to be out, and it's got a dollar amount. Some of this is in '24, some of it's '23. So we have a plan, some of it's in '27. We have a plan to do some of this in out years. I thought is, do we, do we as a council, and again, it's just a question for you guys, it's a question that the council says we're going to dedicate X dollars to the O and M, and it's, we do this as cash as you go, and we're going to do it over four years, five years, whatever the case is. We're just going to dedicate that to make sure it happens.
Yeah, I think on some of this, there's so many things on here certainly that probably need to be done, but I don't see any list of a priority of what really needs to be done, you know, over a period of time, say in the next year, year and a half or whatever, and put the priority list of what needs to actually be done or should be done.
If I could, the years, and your CIP does provide at least a starter priorities because that shows when they need to be done. These aren't all 2024 items. So, and wholeheartedly agree, we get into bonding things for sub 200, 300 when we don't have the gumption to pay for stuff that needs to be done on an annual budget process.
But I think, but I think it brings up a point, and this is a plan, this isn't to be done all tomorrow, but it is a plan in writing to do prioritization. And Carrie, I don't know if this could be drilled down to, you know, a five-year plan to recapitalize, recapitalize, you know, all of these needs over a five-year period. What would that look like? And what would that look like, you know, per year? And maybe when you get to West Pearland Community or Veteran Sports Complex or even Centennial, some of those, I mean, Centennial Park now is going on, gosh, 20 years, 20-plus years old now? Probably older than that now. And so I don't know how old some of the fencing and those types of things and all of that, but maybe that gets put into a future bond program where we're recapitalization like we did with the equipment in 19. Maybe those last three get put into some kind of a bond program, but everything else gets put into a four- or five-year period of recapitalizing. What would that then be on an annual basis when we look at that as a budget? Woody, that goes back to your question, you know, from a prioritization, what needs to happen and when, and then we fund it out of general fund and replace them. Anyway, just a thought, we can obviously talk about that a little bit more as we move forward, but I think some of this can be done out of cash as you go and make it happen. So certainly if we've got parks and they're ours, and we need to, we need to make sure that the equipment is in good repair. If it needs to be replaced, it needs to be replaced. And so we need to make sure that we're doing a good job of that and maintaining it. So, and it is difficult because all this stuff is weathered, out in the sun, it's out in the elements. Certainly, you know, there for vandals and everything else to do what they want to do with it, but it's part of the...
The good thing is it's getting used, and people are, I mean, I'm glad to hear the comments about using Independence Park so much and wanting to make it more, even more accessible, but we do, that's the plus side.
It's all good. I think the trails, adding all of the trails that are in here, just it'll actually realize that dream that we had years ago when we started the master trail plan and, you know, actually a city connected through trails, not just, you know, roadways. So all those kinds of things add to the quality of life. Last chance for comments, questions?
This is only one department.
Yeah, I know. I know. Certainly, they all have needs, absolutely. Clay, back to you.
Just what Member Owen said is true, but that's why we do these, break them up in the quarterly's. I want to do give you a preview. We had a good post-budget discussion, and we talked about the need, it's something overlooked, and that's our internal services. So I mentioned the mayor, I'd like to add another next quarter, one of these workshops and give some time and dedication and do that annually for finance, HR, IT, and EPW fleet. They'd serve all of us by having eyes and attention to those internal services that keep everything else running.
Those internal services are big numbers. They add up. So I think that's a good idea. I know it's not technically CIP, but I mean, it's a big impact to the budget.
Yeah, this format has worked well, I think, mutually for you and for us to get across.
Yeah, absolutely. Surface water plant update?
Okay, Mayor and counsel, as is with our normal tradition, every time we have a gathering such as this, we will then give you a quick update real quick on the surface water plant. So with that, budget's still remaining the same. There's no new money being added to the contract, no additional items being directed, owner directed to the contractor, so his only remedy is time. As we discussed about two weeks ago, there was a balance of contingency of $4.2 million after our last update here at the last council meeting. With that, moving forward, we are collaborating with our water production and wastewater treatment departments and divisions to be able to simplify our shared contracts for chemicals across all utilities. So we'll be going out for bid shortly, and that'll be to then purchase our quantities that we need for the surface water treatment plant along with our other facilities as As we talked about in detail at our last update, the contractor, PLW, will be installing several temporary loops around the facilities to start testing individual components and then moving forward with that process so we can then start bringing those items online and then test them out, get them proofed, and then start working towards full production in the schedule of June, July of 2023 for full water production. So we'll just go quickly. So this month is continuing to move forward on doing that loop. It has been delayed just due to some parts a little bit, and procurement, supply chain issues do challenge that, so this is where the flexibility is, but we are moving forward with this process. It just happens to push out a little bit due to that delay of parts, so it'll be November to do testing of that loop, of Loop One and continuing moving forward. So then in November, Loop One will work on for the pretreatment side. This is moving forward in our raw water lift station, doing pretreatment, testing and vetting out, making sure everything works, then heading towards Loop Two for solids removal. That'll go to our belt presses, taking everything in the pretreatment, test this out. And then December, looking at our membrane system, this will be clean water. This will be filling our groundwater storage tank, backfeeding that in so that we can do clean water testing with the vendors. And in January, start looking at using raw water, and this will then start working towards the process for meeting what is called two NTUs, and those are Nephlo... I'm just going to go NTUs, but it's a turbidity limit, and they have to be that way for our membranes to be effective. And then heading into February for Loop Five, continuing our membrane testing, starting our process for our 90-day testing to run for production of our water quality and record those results, and then starting that process of submitting into TCQ and then getting permission and approvals in July. Plant staffing schedule, we talked extensively on this. We are currently advertising right now for those approved positions. And back to you, Mayor.
Any questions, comments from counsel on the update on our water treatment plant? Is it on schedule? Is it under budget? I'm sorry, I just, that way we can have it on time, on the record, so. Any scope change? No, so. I don't see any. So other than that, Clay, do we have anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, we will call this workshop to a close. Thank you.[1710.45]